Ten seconds. It's the only thing I'm in control of, I think, starting the meeting. Other than that, I have no control over anything. Okay. Do we have theme music or something like that in place?
We should.
Yeah, we should.
That would be good, not to pick sides.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Laconia Regular Planning Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, October 6, 2015. It is 6:30, and we can begin our formal agenda. First of all, the meeting, I'll ask the Recording Secretary, Kalina Graham, to be the Recording Secretary for this evening, and would you please do the roll call of the members?
Charlie Sinclair.
Here.
Mike Delvick here.
Here.
Jay Tibman.
Here.
Edwin Vornes.
Here.
Gail Denial.
Here.
Hamilton between.
Here.
And Chair Warren Hedges.
Well, thank you. And also at the table is Planning Director Shannon Saunders and Assistant Director Brandy Logan. We do have a quorum, but I would like to ask both alternates to vote this evening, Charlie and Michael, in place of Jerry's not here, Don's not here, and Bill's not here. And so, but the quorum for official planning board meetings are five voters, and we do have that. Presentations, there are no presentations tonight. There's no continue extensions, but we'll move right into extensions. The first extension request is from its application 05-014SP, 05-017CUP, 05-018CUP Aqua Marine Yacht Club. They're requesting an extension for the completion of the project. Would the applicant like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Lance May. I represent Aqua Marine Yacht Club. As you guys know, it's been a long process. The Marina has five phases under this one extension that we're looking to get extended for one year. Currently, we have three of the phases done. You know, we built all those cabanas, the pool, completed the docks, all those different infrastructures there, the beach bar and grill. This past year, we built a giant prep room. The prep room has dry storage and then a big walk-in refrigerator. The Marina parking lot is pretty much 100% complete minus pavement and lighting. We removed over 30,000 cubic yards this past year out of the parking lot. A lot of that material just needed to be gone because there was an old brickyard there, and the material couldn't be used. So, we're looking for the one-year extension. The current phases that we're looking to build, we've recently been, we hired a consultant, Collier Financial. He's helping us put together a package to go to a bank. Right now, as we speak, we hired a draftsman. He's building the final set of plans, and we're looking to get, we're in the process of getting bids from a lot of our subs, and we're actively pursuing that right now as we speak.
What are the plans for?
For the final phases.
That final large building?
Yes.
The Marina?
Yeah.
Building the restaurant, the retail spaces?
Yeah, exactly. So, we've actually configured it a little differently. We originally had, like, all the bathrooms in Phase Five. Those are now being moved to Phase Four, just better use of the space. But, you know, that's what the draftsman's doing right now. He's configuring all the rooms and making sure that they work with all the, you know, the firewalls and everything like that.
Will that building be sited on the current building that's behind your dock system?
Yeah, the brick pump house. So, it actually connects into that building. It comes from the cabanas and then does like an L shape and connects over to that brick building, you know, part of the existing structure. So, that structure will actually be used.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
So, this new building will be on the footprint of the original approved building?
Yes, no changes from the original footprint.
Okay.
Staff?
I think we would recommend approval. It looks like they're starting to move forward. I would say, you know, as long as we see, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to be seeing building permits in the next six months or so, correct? Yeah.
That's the goal.
Then they should be well under construction by the time we're here this time next year.
Oh, excellent. For the new members of the board, what we do is we grant yearly authorization rather than multiple years at one time, so that the applicants need to do as Lance is doing here tonight, come and brief the board on the progress of the project, so that we know that it's not dead and it's continuing with its original scope and that where their issues might be. As we've come through the recession, many developers have had all kinds of understandably difficult times putting together their financial packages. And so, that's why, as a practice of this board, we've been doing it year by year, and it may look like there's been a lot of extensions, but on these very complex projects, they all can't be done in one year's time. Are there any questions to the applicant or staff? Then I would entertain a motion to grant the continuance. Anne?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the extension for completion for application thing. There we go. 05-014SP, 05-07CUP, 05-018CUP Aqua Marine Yacht Club. Extension of time, plan review, plan revision is done. Mile or final plans are completed. Site improvement security is done, and they're requesting a completion date revised to October 4, 2016.
Excellent. Is there a second to this?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. The motions were made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to the continued development of your site. The next extension application is PL is 2013-0096SU and 0097CUP Wetland Buffer. It's for 640 Elm Street. They're requesting an extension for site security and completion. And the applicant is, the applicant is represented by?
John Roki. For the next three applications, actually. I got all the rest of the extensions.
Geez, if you'd just work faster, you wouldn't need these extensions.
There you go. I'm working on it.
Okay.
Anyway, the 640 Elm Street one is 100% because of getting project financing. I talked to the owner, and supposedly, he's looking at maybe by the end of October actually getting it locked down, but there'd be, there'd be no way we could get it done before the deadline runs out. I think we, I think our request is normally December, but we're coming early just to try to make sure we're ahead of it a little bit, and we are trying to get the financing, and supposedly, it's looking good at this point, and hopefully, get the project up and running this fall.
Staff?
Yeah, so this is the first, second.
Second.
Extension request.
Yep.
We know that they've had financing trouble in the past. I think it's reasonable to give them one more year. We're coming out of the recession, so they should be able to get financing this upcoming year and be under construction shortly.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Then I would entertain a motion to grant the continuance request.
I move for application 2013-0096SU, 0097CUP for 640 Elm Street, MBL 309-71-2. The approval of an extension to site security and completion. Site improvement security would be revised to December 6, 2016, and the complete, final completion would be revised to December 6, 2016.
Excellent.
Second.
The motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor in granting the extension, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. You. The third application for an extension is application 06-010SU, 06-007CUP Cluster, 06-008CUP Wetlands, and it's for Lilac Valley. Lots one and two between 107 and Old Prescott Hill Road. They're requesting an extension for completion. Would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, the Lilac Valley project, I don't know if you guys have been by there lately, but they're just about ready to pave the entrance and down over to the bridge. The bridge is in, most of the retaining wall is in going up the hill. They're going to start, they actually found a ledge up across where the bridge is, so they're starting blasting, I think, next week to complete the rest of the road on that side. But we're anticipating having the road done, if not before winter, but probably not before winter at this point with the blasting, but in the spring, we should have the road on that side off of 107 completely done. And they're, they're anticipating starting to build some units, probably in the spring on that side, and things are continuing along. We have Spofford, Spofford out there working on the project right now, and we're, it's made huge progress this year, so.
And what's the plan for Phase Three?
Um, I actually wanted to see what, what the, what we could do with Phase Three. At some point, does the project get vested with the first two things, first two phases done, because the, the infrastructure on this project is hugely weighted towards this 107 side. Like, we have the bridge and retaining wall, and like, a whole bunch of the project is like, top-heavy infrastructure-wise on the 107 side, and you almost need the 106 side to balance out the last 30 lots, end up covering some of the infrastructure costs on Phase Two. It was something I wanted to at least bring up with you guys and ask what the, where, if there was any point that a vesting phase could be vested in the project and not have to do any more extensions, just to make sure we're, you know, covered on infrastructure.
So, you've broken the?
I have not talked to you guys about that. I just, I just brought it up out of the blue right now, so.
You've broken the project into separate phases, so each separate phase has its own vesting.
Yep.
But by, by moving through construction on the phases, it shows due diligence. So, I do think that, you know, as, as Phase Two gets to completion, I think the board will look favorably on extensions for Phase Three, knowing that you'll be moving right into that.
Yep.
So, is the plan for Phase Three not to start that next spring?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what, what options there even is, so, just to be sure.
So, and just for the record, too, what we will do is we would close out site security on Phase Two.
Yep.
Just like we did with the John Drive.
Yes.
And we transferred it over to Phase Two.
Yeah, yep.
And then we'd close out Phase Two, and that site security then can transfer to Phase Three, or you can submit it new, but we'd have a whole new.
Yep.
Contracts and site security for Phase Three.
Okay.
If anyone hasn't had the opportunity yet to go out and do a site inspection, I'd highly recommend it. It's just beyond Gilbert Block, and the, the amount of infrastructure that you have installed for the bridge and the approaches to the bridge is absolutely mind-boggling.
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm saying. The project, the project is really dependent upon the whole project being built for it to be economically viable at all.
Well, I would think so.
And that's why, that's why I brought up the question right now of, is there a way of making sure it gets vested in case, like, this gets done, that, that third, that's that third phase or has to be, has to come together at some point, no matter what, so. That was my question that at least brought up. I know we're, we're good until next year. I, well, if you grant the extension, we're good until next year, but, um.
I think the, the actions of the board and the, and department, there's no question that you should feel insecure.
Oh, no, I mean, I'm, I'm just, if, if for some reason, I have no idea, I have no, no idea whether this would come about, but if for some reason, they don't start Phase Three immediately after Phase Two, like, if they try to get some units up and then start building Phase Three, I just want, that's, that was my question, so.
And as their, as your clients' plans change as of, just bring it back into us.
Yep.
It's affordable housing.
Yep.
It's completely in line and supportive of our master plan.
Yep.
It, the work that you're doing, the substantial investment that you're making, you're checking off all the boxes.
Okay, that's good. I just, I just wanted to put, I just want to put it on record that, that the project kind of is dependent upon all, all the units getting built, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, that's good for, that's good for us to hear that, too.
Yep.
So, let's see. You're all set? You're all set? Any, any additions of discussion? Seeing none, then, Ham, do you want to continue the role of making?
I guess, I guess I will.
You're the old man here.
I, um.
Or I should say, senior.
Yes, for application 06-010SU and 06-007CUP Cluster and 06-008CUP Wetlands, map and lot for 70-20, one and two, Lilac Valley, lots one and two, they're requesting a completion date to be revised to November 1, 2016, and Phase Three completion, excuse me, that was completion of Phase Two, November 1, 2016, and completion of Phase Three, December 6, 2016.
Excellent. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm glad to, glad to finally report that one's doing something after, I think it was 2008 that it kind of died, and we've been trying to revive it since then, so.
Well, there's been, there's been a lot of issues, ownership issues.
Ownership issues, and on and on and on with that one. So, I'm glad, I'm glad it's moving forward, so, anyway.
Thank you. The next is application, are you, is that one of yours, too?
Yep.
Nick is here with me, but.
Okay. It's application 04-031SP, 04-019CUP Cluster, 04-020CUP Wetlands. It's for Endicott Street East, Governor's Crossing, and they're requesting an extension for the completion date.
Yep.
Of Phase.
Phase Two.
Two.
Phase Two.
Yep. If you remember, we had gotten an approval from you guys to do the temporary cul-de-sac at the top of the hill, and we have the, the city council, I believe, voted to take the road over at this point on Phase One.
Can I just interject for the new people? The Governor's Crossing is, is on 11B. It's a cross from what was St. Helena's Church, and it's been a project going on. It's two major components. Phase One is where they have now built all the, not all.
No, not.
But a substantial number of homes in the $300,000 range, and Phase Two is the one beyond it, towards the Guilford side.
It looped, it looped, it's all eventually a continuous loop back to, back to 11B, so.
But we get so used to do it, just that, I just wanted to give you the overall picture.
Yep. Yeah, if you, if you're driving over there, the second that we're going to come back out, you'll see a big cleared area and some big rocks, you know, blocking it off and stuff like that. That's going to be where the Phase Two comes back out again. What we've done, though, in the last year is we, well, last year, we got the AOT updated. The AOT was actually, the alteration of terrain permit was actually expired, so we, last fall, we got the approval on that, and we, they, he did some clearing, and he's been kind of steadily working on it this year, clearing, clearing things out, getting, working on some of the road grades. And Dean Clark, I believe, is out, going to be out there staking out the lower detention pond area to try to get that built coming up here this fall, and just continuing to plug away at the construction of it, though, so.
So, we, we do not have site security in place for Phase Two, and I know that we've talked with the owner about.
Okay.
Some of the cutting and.
Yep.
And some encroachments that, that occurred, and to kind of cool it until we got construction cost estimates for Phase Two, so that we could get site security amounts in place. We have site security amounts for Phase One. I think we're holding a little bit on the cul-de-sac end to make sure that there's a connection there, very small amount, but we have no site security on Phase Two, so we need to have that in place before you continue construction out there.
I know we discussed it, but I think we discussed it in terms of the letter of credit that the city wanted. I didn't know we had, and the letter of credit's still in effect, still on file.
I believe the letter of credit has expired. I don't think we got it renewed.
Well, then I got an email just today's mail that has been approved to be renewed, so it should be just sent in.
Excellent. Excellent. So, if we could get a copy of that, then that would absolutely resolve that.
The email just came in today. I thought it was, I didn't know it expired, actually.
And so, one of the other things?
I thought it was non-expire, non-expiring letter of credit.
I don't think so. I think, and I think one of the other things that we've been asking for are construction cost estimates, because the letter of credit, if, if there is a letter of credit, it's for Phase One. It has not been looked at under the cost estimates for Phase Two. So, we need to take a look at that and make sure that it lines up with today's dollars, because it's probably in $2,008.
We already have a figure in mind.
Excellent. Good, good. So, if we could resolve that, then we should be all set.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Any other issues that should be?
Nope, nope.
Well, there's one request I'd like to make, and I see, I need some help. I need some help from the board, and I see John is here. We need some help from John. Having a lot of people complaining, especially when the leaves go down, about the site of the property across the way. And right now, we're building two houses on spec, and you've got another building permit application that's in house right now, waiting for, and a lot of people are having difficulties because of the looks, the vehicles, the boats, the cars, the continuing yard sales across the street, and it's a very bad detriment. We've had a lot of people walk away, and we've been talking about this for years, six, seven years now, eight years, and nothing seems to happen on it. I need John's help to get, you know, you've got a lot of machinery out there, you've got equipment out there, you've got buildings, and it's just an eyesore. It looks very bad, and it's not very, you know, pleasing to the eye for everybody, including us, including sales. You know, sales are difficult right now. There's still, nothing's moving. We're putting these houses up on speculation, but, you know, we've had difficulties. People complain about it. The neighbors are complaining about it. I'm surprised they're not here. I told them that I would mention it to the board, and, you know, I hope, you know, there's even discussion, there's somebody, my homeowner's, potential homeowner's saying, why don't you take legal action on it? Well, I don't want to go out and find legal action, but, you know, we've got ordinances and zoning issues, and we're not seem to be enforcing them, and, you know, we try to comply, but I think we need some help. I need some help from the board, I need some help from John. It's, it's a tough situation.
Would you like to address that?
Yeah, the city is working on it. The process, there's no doubt the process is slow. There is a process we have to follow, but we are working on it.
I know, Shannon, it's been eight years that we've, you know, letters in the files from eight years ago, and complaints from eight years ago, and here we are, eight years now.
Yes, there are, and we have a new process now where we're working with the city prosecutor, and so, we start from page one under that process, and we go through what we need to go through. And it does take a little bit of time, but I can tell you, we are working on, on that particular property.
You know, for years, I offered the town, the city, and I offered John help to transport some of the stuff and get some of the stuff out of there if we have to, and we're willing to help them.
Yeah.
It's just, all work together to get it done.
Yep, yep, yep.
Right? We all benefit.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, there's, there's two opportunities, then, for the property owner to take action, and then the city is taking action, which comes first.
Correct.
I'm willing to help, too, if I can.
Excellent, that's good to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning this, this application for extension? Then, Ham, would you mind doing the motion?
No, not at all. This is for application 04-013SP, 04-019CUP Cluster, 04-020CUP Wetlands, map and lot 169-72-14, Endicott Street East, Governor's Crossing. The, the motion is to approve an extension for the completion date to December 6, 2016.
If I could add that, if we could, the site improvement security prior to the start of work, because it has not been put in place.
Ah, yes, okay, and under 4C requirement, the site improvement security should be in place prior to the resumption of construction.
Excellent. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of bringing the extension, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't worry, I'll be back later.
Oh, okay, okay. We have no continued public hearings, and so, we'll move right into the public hearing portion. There is an application, PL 2015-0108SP. It's a waiver for sidewalks. It's 136 Frank Bean Road, and it's a, there is a waiver for sidewalks, and the proposal is to construct a 4,000-square-foot warehouse addition. Does the staff represent that the application is complete, ready for hearing?
Yes.
Then I would like to ask for a motion to accept the application.
I'll make a motion to accept application PL 2015-0108SP, waiver for sidewalks, proposal to construct 4,000 square feet of warehouse addition.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion is accepted, and we can begin the public hearing process. We will open the public hearing at 6:55 PM. Is the applicant ready to present, or are they representative of the applicant? You had that look in your eye, Peter.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter Howard from Stephen Smith &amp; Associates here, representing GEI Holdings LLC. Did you want to address the waiver first? Is that the idea?
Yes, why don't you do that? Because we'll need to vote separately on that before the other proposal, so you can discuss that, and then the staff will respond to that as well.
Yeah, we can talk, you can talk about the whole overview of the project.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, I'll present the, the overall project, then. The project is, again, this, we're representing GEI Holdings LLC. The project's at 136 Frank Bean Road, off from 107. Y'all familiar with where, where it is, top of the hill? It's up behind the big sand pit that Gilbert has. I only say that because, just so you'll be familiar with the fact that it's very sandy soil out there, we're taking advantage of that in our drainage analysis of the property. The site is a 2.4-acre site. It's in the IP zone. Currently, there are three buildings on the property. I have two plans on board here. This is the existing conditions. This is Frank Bean Road. There are three buildings, this building, this building, this building. This is Jagia Electric. This is a motorcycle repair shop. This is currently about 7,500 square feet of cold storage. There's one access point. This is paved, goes around this storage building here. The site has its own septic system, it has its own well, and there's also a right-of-way here for access by Gilbert Block, David Park Equipment in the back. The rest of it is pretty much green, either woods or grass. There is a drainage pipe that comes under Frank Bean Road that outlets here, goes on and off the property and works its way down over the hill. What we are proposing is the addition of 4,000 square feet of storage space, again, more cold storage space. The way this cold storage space is used right now, small contractors or clients will, there are 20, 20 doors, 10 on each side, and so, they'll rent a little, you know, a little portion of the building, they'll pull up to the side of it, unload ladders, watch them, you know, or equipment, or things like that, or get ladders, or, you know, things that they have stored in this, in this building. The GEI Holdings would like to increase that by putting this 4,000-square-foot building in here. Paving around it, as you can see, it is green now, so they pave around it on this side, so, again, trucks are, small trucks, trailers, pull up, pull up to the side. There'd be eight doors on this side, eight doors on this side, some downlighting, would be no water, no sewer. Underground electric's going to be provided to it. Pretty basic and plain, you just want some additional storage space. I guess probably one of the, one of the big issues here is, is drainage and runoff. As I mentioned, this is the Gilbert sand pit that they use for making their blocks and their concrete products. This property is that type of soil as well, very well-drained, hydrological soil, Group A. So we're, we're going to take advantage of that and try to help improve the drainage that's out there. Right now, there's one catch basin, it's located right here, everything sort of is graded toward that. It goes into that catch basin, goes out into this runoff here. There are some roof drains along the side of this building, they go into pipes, and they, they come out. What we're proposing to do is that this blue strip right here, this blue strip right here, and these two blue dots right here are all going to be infiltration basins along the side of the building. We're going to have stone surrounded by filter fabric, water can drain into it, and then infiltrate into the ground. There's an overflow pipe that goes to the next one. This again is stone along the edge, edge of the building. Any water in this area, because this is sort of a low spot right here, would get into this infiltration trench along the side of the building, be able to infiltrate into the ground. Also has an overflow pipe. Eventually, that overflow pipe gets back to the only catch basin that's on the property. But again, these two catch basins right here are going to have, be perforated, so the water can get out of them. It's two feet of stone around each one of them. So again, water that gets in there will be able to get into the basin and hopefully infiltrate back into the ground. If it's not able to do that, or if there's an overflow, then it will follow the pipe to this catch basin and then be released out into the stream. We've done a drainage analysis on it and discovered that actually will be decreasing the amount of runoff from the site based on the infiltration that we're providing. We're also proposing four street trees. The, unfortunately, public service just went and cut down some of the trees that were along this front because of the wires that are, that run along the front of the property right now. So we're going to replace those with trees that will not create quite as much of a crown to try to stay out of the wire. So we're proposing those four street trees along the frontage. We're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk along the frontage, and probably about 250 feet maybe of sidewalk that would be required according to the site plan regulations, but we're asking for a waiver of it because of the location of it, because there are no churches, or community centers, or other sidewalks, or other trails, or anything else in the vicinity that would, you know, really lend itself to, to having sidewalks in this particular area. It's in an industrial area, we've waived sidewalks in other industrial areas, and we just feel that it's, would be one of those sidewalks that really doesn't get used, it doesn't really go anywhere, and there's not really any, any real benefit to the community for having to install it. So, again...
And, Peter, and the buildings are not office buildings, are they?
This is an office building, the existing, it's, it's, it's an office of Jagia Electric. It's office and storage, they store about this much of it is, is storage for them.
But it's not a high-density...
No, no. They do repairing motorcycles and...
Motorcycles.
...to work on. I've seen a bunch of them parked over there. In this building, and again, this building is, is just storage, and people, small vehicles, smaller trucks, it's not great big huge tractor trailer trucks, they come in and out of there, it doesn't have the, you know, the ability to really make those turns. It's more or less small contractors who rent the space, pull up, unload, and leave.
When you made reference to the, that they're cold storage buildings, they're not refrigerated in any way?
No, no, all I mean by that, there's no heat.
Hey, Stuart.
There's no heat, there's no water, there's no sewer. There is just electricity, basically for lighting, downcast LED lighting we're putting around it.
Peter, the traffic that's in there, is it forklift traffic or truck traffic?
Excuse, I guess I don't understand the question. To unload and things?
The travels to that, that whole side of that building.
This would be vehicles.
Okay.
There's pavement all around it, you could go in. This is going to be gravelled here, if anybody needs to make that loop. We're going to pave on this side. This is the disturbed area, it's about 13,000 square feet, .3 acres of the 2.4 acre lot. So we won't need a stormwater pollution prevention plan, we're well under an acre, we won't need an alteration of terrain, we're not near the water, or any of those kind of slopes, or those kind of amount of disturbed area. It's pretty small. And you're not concerned about ice buildup from those two manholes that you have? No. Okay.
Shannon, we've got, we've got dead storage here, and we've got occupied offices with the electrical contractor and the motorcycle. Could the dead storage buildings, the one that's existing and the one they're proposing, could they be converted to offices for a contractor in the future? That would be an acceptable use, I would think.
They could, they would be bound by parking requirements. So as long as they can fit the appropriate parking on, they would be able to do that.
They wouldn't have to come back, would they have to come back to us?
Um, probably not to you guys, it would be probably either minor site plan or administrative, depending on the square footage.
Okay.
Anything under 10,000 square feet can be minor site plan, anything under five can be just administrative.
Okay.
Shannon, would you like to...
I would love to, but Brandy's done a very good job on this, so I'm going to defer to her.
Excellent.
So, this project meets all of the zoning requirements, setbacks, green space, the use is permitted in the zone. We do have a couple of plan revisions that we would recommend. One is included in the staff review, Plan Revision A, the abutter information included for one of the abutting lots is incorrect, that just needs to be revised. I would add a Plan Revision B, that the wetlands buffer must be added to and shown on the plan. This particular set of work is outside of that buffer, it would just be really good to have it shown on the plan. Other than that, we have our standard conditions that we're recommending for approval, including an impact fee of $960 based on the square footage. So, as far as the overall site review goes, we recommend approval with those couple of plan revisions. I can speak to the sidewalks now, if you'd like.
That'd be good.
Okay. So the sidewalk waiver has been submitted. I've got copies, oh, do you already have them? The copies of the sidewalk waiver criteria from our subject...
Yes, clearly distributed them.
Okay. So you guys all should have a copy of that. When, when an application comes in with a request for a waiver of any sort, in this case, it's sidewalks, there are waiver criteria that the board can use to apply to see if it meets those criteria, and then they can grant that waiver if they feel that it meets one or more of those criteria. In this situation, the staff would recommend that the waiver be granted based on a number of criteria. So this would be on the second page of what we gave you. The existing and projected land uses in the vicinity of the subject property is number one. This is a fairly light used area, lightly used area by pedestrians, so sidewalks in this situation maybe aren't needed as much as in other areas. The, whether or not the subject property is located in close proximity to any other property where sidewalks or pedestrian pathways currently exist, that's number three. Again, this is kind of removed from pedestrian-heavy areas. Same thing with number five, whether or not the property's near schools, churches, community centers, et cetera. The number seven, eight, and nine, we also feel apply. And this is talking about reasonable alternatives, consideration of any other pending or proposed development applications, and any other relevant ordinance, statutes, regulations, et cetera. So based on those waiver criteria, that is why we would recommend the board grant the waiver.
Thank you. This is, again, for the new people, this is a, sidewalks are a very important part of our master plan, and it is one that many applicants come before us and ask for waivers. Primarily, it's, it could be motivated by a cost savings on their part, and we spend time reviewing the site plan very, very carefully, and again, it's going back to the regulations to, because in residential areas, and as, as the purpose of this document says, it's very much in the interest of the city to have more sidewalks for connectivity and for safety. And so, we spend a, application by application, and it's very important, as what Brandy has just done, is go down over the reasons why a waiver should be granted versus requiring sidewalks, requiring money in lieu of sidewalks. So that this again gives predictability to applicants, and also gives us a consistency of action, so that it is not a, a situation where we're inconsistent depending upon what part of the city or what project it is.
I have a question.
Certainly.
Let's pretend this waiver wasn't there, that you weren't, they weren't asking for the waiver. Would that sidewalk be considered on public property? Would it be a public sidewalk?
Correct.
So, let's pretend that they were forced to do it, there was no waiver given. Would the city be plowing that sidewalk?
Um, probably not.
Okay.
The city keeps in mind the cost of the maintenance, and here, where there's no connective sidewalk, they probably would not pay to drive the sidewalk plow up for the 200 feet, or whatever.
That's all I would have to hear right there, to say, no, to the sidewalk then. Because if the city's going to make somebody do it, then the city must feel there's an importance for that sidewalk there, and I understand that. But then the city needs to step forward and say, and we're going to keep it clear in the winter, so all these people that we're building, you're building a sidewalk for can use it. So if they're not going to, if they wouldn't be plowing it in this position, and I understand that, then that should be reason enough right there to say, no.
That's certainly one of the things to consider. This sidewalk thing is, it seems simple. It's not simple. And as you spend more time with us, and we get into application by application, it gets more, it gets, it's a difficult area to be fair and consistent with.
But in every instance, Warren, the applicants either put in the sidewalk, or they make a payment in lieu of the sidewalk.
Except if, under these conditions, we waive that requirement.
Oh, so it's a waiver not only of the installation of the sidewalk, but any payment in lieu of?
Yes. Because when, when the payment in lieu of is accepted, it's when we have determined that a sidewalk is...
Should be.
Should be, according to our regulation installed, and the applicant says, whoa, I would rather make a payment to the city to be used in the general area for municipal purposes, for sidewalks for schools, for any other public buildings, or to finish sidewalks out in that, in that part of town.
Yeah, if I could just clarify too, it's, we, we ask for the in lieu payment when, when sidewalks are really warranted there, but, but building that sidewalk would really be an isolated piece. And so, what we would do is build up the kitty to make that a connected sidewalk, to connect that piece with many others in that area. You know, for example, you know, if we were to ask for an in lieu payment here, it would be really to put sidewalks all the way up from the connected sidewalks on Main Street to eventually reach this piece, knowing that at, at that build-out point, we probably would have the heavy pedestrian traffic we would need.
But that, but that payment that the applicant would make in lieu of building the sidewalks is not held specifically for, to build sidewalks in that area, it's used in other places in the city?
No, no, it would be in the area specific to, it doesn't have to be on this particular lot, but it would have to be used in an area that the property owners and residents of this lot would, we would think that they would use that sidewalk on a regular basis. In this particular case, this sidewalk is in the industrial zone, it's kind of outside of any core residential area, it's not with any of the recreational areas where folks are using the sidewalk on a regular basis, like in the Weers, so really, the waiver is very warranted.
Good.
Any other questions about this? Then what I will first do is ask for a, just a motion to grant...
Public, with, public...
That's very good.
It says it right here, too.
You would think that I would eventually look at my sheets. Are there any abutters that would like to speak to this application, to the board? Seeing none, are there any other taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the board concerning this application? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at 14...
Can I make a comment on one of the proposed revisions?
As the applicant, you can do it now, or you can do it later.
Okay, I just was, I wasn't familiar with one of the revisions that's being proposed, that's putting on the wetlands, putting on the wetlands buffer on the plan.
Yeah.
And, the only reason I would like to, the wetlands would be associated with this drainage, and because we were out of the buffer area of that, we haven't even done any wetlands mapping of this. This is, this is from, we combined what work we did with an older plan that, that shows drainage going down there. So we, we haven't located specifically the wetland that may be associated with this. So we would have to go back out, you know, get a, hire a wetland scientist to map the wetland in order to be able to legitimately show a wetland buffer to, to that. So I'm not, we're really not in a position to do that right now. If that stays as a revision, of course, we would do it, but I just don't, we didn't see the, we didn't see the justification for having to do that in this particular case because of the location, because of the size of the development that we were proposing for the property.
Perhaps, Peter, would you be more favorable to better labeling that wetlands line, so that it's called out in several places along the line? Potential wetland area per whatever plan you, I just, I don't want, typically, when folks pull a development plan for future development, they pull the most recent one. So I don't want this plan to be pulled five years from now, and for construction to occur on that side of the lot, and for the fact that there's a wetland there to be lost.
Well, I'm assuming that any work that would ever be done in here, they, you know, if, if we were proposing work on this side, we would locate the, you know, we would have it mapped.
Yep.
You know, I'm just saying, we weren't proposing any work on this side, so we stayed away from it. You know, we, we did, we went out and topowed, you know, the, the development area, all the edges of pavement, the buildings and all that, but we did not go beyond the back of the building and locate the wetland. If this, you know, it's, it's not like it's a flagrant wetland, like you'd really, you know, notice...
Which is my concern, I think. You, so you have a line on this plan, is there a way to label that line as potential wetland, or, or drainage area boundary per, you know, 19-whatever plan, or, because it, right now, it's just a line, it's not even labeled.
Right, right. And as I put on this existing conditions plan, existing edge of wetland from reference Plan A. Now, what we took, we took this as-built plan of William P. Jagia Trust, you know, that was done in...
1998. So that notation would...
1998.
That notation would be absolutely perfect if you just put it on the proposed improvements plan, which is the one that we would ask for the Mylar from. Yep.
All right, I'll put that on there.
Shannon, just a, just a, this is a procedural question, more than anything. When a, when a site plan comes before us, and as in this case, the proposed construction is not anywheres near the wetland buffer area, when does, how far away does the development have to be, or how close for the wetlands buffer area to be shown on the site plan?
Typically, it would be, it would be, if it is, if the wetland line is called out on the plan, we would ask that the wetland buffer also be called out on the plan. So in a case like this, typically, we would do that. It looks like it was missed by the conservation tech, and I don't wonder if it was because it was not labeled well. We talked a lot about drainage and infiltration and things like that, but typically, if the wetland is on the proposed site plan, we ask that the buffer be added.
But the, the wetland is not, that, is that the, is that the, that line represent the limits of the buffer, or the wetland?
The wetland, per the 1998, 97...
So a portion of a wetland is on the site plan, whether it is, the proposed development is encroaching on it or not, it needs to be shown on the site plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Because, so, we're looking at this whole lot as a development proposal, but really, the work, the limits of work are that yellow piece. We know that yellow piece is outside of the wetlands buffer, but at some point, this plan can be pulled up for work on maybe that northernmost building, or, I'm not sure, yet northernmost building, which would be much closer to the wetland, and somebody may not, would pull this and not see wetland buffer and think one may not be associated with this lot, or something like that. So that's why we ask that it be proposed.
So again, that blue line is the buffer line, or the wetland line?
The wetland line.
Okay, and where's the buffer line?
It is not shown, and that's what we were asking to be shown.
I got, okay, good, I got, now I understand.
But they explained that they didn't have it delineated. So I think a notation on that blue line, because right now, it's just a line, I know what it is, you know, we know what it, what it is as a group, because we look at these plans, and we know that's, you know, if it leads to a culvert, it's probably wetland. But someone picking up that plan, wanting to buy that northernmost building 10 years from now, may not realize it's a wetland, and that building may be in the buffer, and we want to make sure that, you know, there's enough information for the public on these plans that they...
Now, will the applicant need to hire a consultant in order to map that buffer line?
Not, not per the agreement we just talked about with just using the notation, that that blue line came from a previous plan. Called out as a wetland per this previous plan. I don't think it, I don't, you know, I think his request not to have it delineated under this plan, since the area of work disturbance is clearly outside of the buffer, I think that request is fine, so...
What's our buffer dimension, 70 feet?
50 feet, yep.
The other thing on this particular piece of profit, I mean, we try to look at this responsibly, too. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to damage the wetlands either. But in this particular case, all of the drainage from these buildings comes towards the, this catch basin. It's all graded that way. And it's very well-drained soil. So we're really not impacting this area at all in the existing condition or in the-
Where does that, that existing catch basin, where does it empty to?
It empties out into that, this drainage here.
Got it.
There's a, there's a pipe that goes from this catch basin right to there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And what I would first do, you're looking at me like you have a question.
I, well, not a question. But based on that discussion,
Yes.
I would revise our Plan Revision B.
Yes.
To read, place a notation on the wetland line in the proposed plan to be in keeping with the existing conditions plan.
Okay. And we'll first vote on the waiver request. The applicant has requested a waiver. The staff has reviewed. Oh, I need to, I didn't do that, okay. 7:21, I'll officially close the public hearing portion and move into the action of the board. Thank you very much. First, we always vote on waivers first. And so the waiver will be to grant the request by the applicant to waive the sidewalk requirements as per the record shows, the recommendation of the staff and the reasons for it. Do I have a motion to do that?
Sure. So, under application PL 2015-0108 SP, waiver of sidewalks, I move that the board approve that, that waiver.
Excellent. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Gail, second.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, very quickly. So you're approving the waiver based on the criteria in the site plan numbers three, four, and five? That the subject property-
Of course, I didn't say that.
I, I heard you whisper it. I just wanted you to clarify.
Four, five, and six.
And six.
Right, right. Under, under the Plan Review Regulations, 7.13 sidewalks, we're recommending that the board approve the waiver of sidewalks based on A, four, five, and six criteria.
And three.
And three.
And three. Oh, and three. And three.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And why that was all necessary is that the record is the official record of the action of the board. And we do want to have down there the specific reasons so that other applicants, when they review the record, they know that we're applying it consistently. Then we'll move on to the application itself for the construction. Ham, you're on a roll. Do you want to do that?
Yes. I move that application PL 2015-0108 SP, 136 Frank Bean Road, MBL 476-351-4. The approval of the construction of a dead storage facility at that location. The plan revision, November 10, 2015. Site plan, or site improvement security, December 1, 2015, or before the start of work, whichever is sooner. MYLAR final plan is December 1, 2015, and completion October 4, 2016. Subject to number two, Plan Revisions A and B. Do I need to give you the language for B?
Yes.
That, that the applicant place on the site plan a wetland, place a line and a label of the wetland delineation. Then number three, A through G, four, A and B, five, A and B. No, excuse me, five, A through H, and six, as, as-billed plans.
You get it all? Outstanding. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And thank you. And thank the applicant also for, this is very good when current businesses expand. It's, it's good for the city, it's good for them, and it's just plain old good. Thank you, Peter. You're not walking out on something, you know? There's no water in that one. There's one up in the-
Go further down.
Yeah, in the wing, the annex. What we'll do now is move on to another public hearing before us. It is, no, no, no. We'll do the Pendleton Beach one next, right?
Yep.
Okay. It's application PL 2015-0109 SU, Amendment 61 Pendleton Road. It proposes to adjust lots and reconfigure. Does the staff represent that the application is complete and ready for hearing?
Yes.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
61 Pendleton?
Yes.
We've received an application for continuance. It's in your packet. And so the applicant has asked that the application be continued to the November 10 meeting.
So we'll vote on granting the continuance?
Correct.
Then I would like to ask, have a motion to grant the, a continuance for this public hearing until our November, and you did state the date November, right. Excellent. Is that acceptable to the staff?
Yes.
Are you making that motion, Jay?
I wanted to ask first before I-
Okay. Well, now you've asked, are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion's made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously and that is extended until November. We don't have to open the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. I don't keep these papers sorted right. I get all confused. The next application before us for a public hearing is application PL 2015-0106 CUP, 0114 CUP Wetlands Buffer. It's for 602 Scenic slash 41 Skipper Court, MBL 124-234-2 and 141-484-5. Waiver for Submittal of Functions and Value Report is one thing we'll have to consider here. And does the staff represent that the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
It is. I just want to point out that the way that we have put this together as staff, this is for a walking trail. This walking trail actually crosses two parcels of property. We've put together one staff report because it's really one trail. It's got one set of issues. At the end of it, when we vote, we're going to take two separate votes because, again, it's two separate parcels. So we need to approve the trail across one parcel, the 41 Skipper's Court, and then the second parcel, the 602 Scenic Road. One connected trail, so we can talk about it altogether.
So I believe, then, that the application acceptance should also be two separate votes.
You do? Okay.
And the numbers that you can use are right on the staff review. PL 2015-0106 CUP, PL 2015-0114 CUP.
Do we need to take a separate vote on each to accept?
You could, you could probably do them together. I think you could do the accept, you accept the application complete for one for both of those. But at the end, when we approve it, we need to do two separate notices. Yep.
Great. And we'll, and then I'll entertain a motion to accept the, the application.
I'd like to make a motion to accept application PL 2015-0106 CUP and PL 2015-0114 CUP.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
A motion made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We can begin the, but what I need to do is open the public hearing. And the public hearing is opened at 7:30 PM. And first, we'll hear from our applicant. Good to see you again, Chris.
While I'm here, I'll be enough, so. Won't forget me, anyway.
No, no, don't forget. No, you're very important to us.
Thank you, Chris Dupree, on behalf of the applicant Aqua Vista LLC. As has been outlined, we have, have two different components here. One is a wetland buffer impact to expand the trail network. And the second is impacts to buffer and wetland to install a couple of culverts to build the path over. So this plan, which I believe you have a copy of in your packet, shows a combination of the existing sidewalk and walking trail network within the overall Meredith Bay community.
Which one should be, we, we, we're looking at? Which page, Chris?
Well-
I think the one of your packet.
I think one, which I believe is the last sheet in here.
It is. You're right.
Because I stapled them all together.
Adrian is first. You've got the last.
The very last sheet. Oh, so yours is a separate design.
It was so wrong, and then I didn't staple them together.
I'm sorry. Why don't you pass that one on? I can share it with you.
Well, thank you. Okay. I'm with you.
Okay, so the, the area with the buffer impact is up in the single-family subdivision. Everything that's shown in red is existing. The green, obviously, is the paved cart trail that's also existing. And so what we would like to do, what we're proposing to do is to connect the subdivision down to the network that runs along behind Blue Gill Lodge and then across the back of the recently approved Spindle View Town Homes through the mid-rises and eventually connecting over to the paved cart path. So this area in here is an existing wetland buffer area. So we're proposing to just basically hug along the property lines, connect from this existing trail. And then, once we get really past this point where the house is shown, we're out of the, the buffer area. And connect that down here to this location. And then, over behind the townhomes that are under construction now up on the hill, we were in as part of this permitting for impacts and the intermittent stream crossing down at this driveway. And now, in order to, we have to figure out how to cross that intermittent stream further up gradient of it in order to connect, connect the path over to get to, get to the paved cart path.
How wide is this path?
10 feet. You know, where we've done them up in the subdivision, they basically followed easements, over utility easements, which Public Works wants us to keep open anyway for maintenance reasons. You know, so they're, they're graded out, stumped. You know, large rocks move. And then we wood chip them. You know, we throw some seed down and then wood chip them and periodically maintain them. These would not be navigable by carts. So, you know, purely a, a walking trail.
Is it going to be paved?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope, nope. Just, you know, a natural woodland trail.
I'm sorry. I should know this, and I apologize that I don't. All the properties that I see here are owned by Aqua Vista, Aqua Village.
Aqua somebody.
Aqua somebody. Is Meredith Bay, the whole Meredith Bay development, is that owned by, was it lands of Aqua?
Yes.
Oh, it was? Oh, okay. I didn't under, I didn't understand. I thought they were two different entities altogether.
Yeah.
I see. Okay, okay. So they're crossing their own property?
Yes.
So why are there two applications?
Because it's crossing two separate parcels. So if you are looking at your map,
Yep.
you can see the dark, dark lines are the property lines.
It's actually crossing three.
It is.
Right?
You are correct. You are correct.
There's one, two, and three.
Well, uh, yes, you are correct.
Four, actually. Four, four different, uh...
That's why I was, I was confused.
Three different ownership entities, four different parcels.
Right. Okay. Yeah, it's this one?
But the areas where we need permits are all Aqua Vista properties. Two different, two different Aqua Vista properties.
So, um...
Actually, no.
So, the big reason that Chris is here tonight is because he has two, um, buffer and wetlands encroachments, two CUPs. Um, and those are the two separate parcels. Chris, this plan, uh, this trail that goes from, um, the mid-rise building up to the Vista property, was that trail shown on previous site plans?
This, this?
Nope.
The longer one from Skipper's Court.
Right, from Skipper's Court down to...
Yep.
One?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Um, so I do think Ham is right. Um, there, there should have been two other site plan approvals as part of this because the trail crosses those other properties as well.
Okay.
And it's, and it's not because, it's because they're separate lots, not necessarily they're owned by separate people, just because they're separate lots.
Correct. They could someday be owned by separate people.
Could, could those be administrative approvals if the board approves the CUP tonight?
Let me just look at this really quick, because the question that comes up is the abutters. And you've notified these abutters, and you've notified these abutters. Yeah, I think it probably could. So, if we approve, um, actually, we could approve, I think we could move forward to approve all four site plan appro, uh, uh, site plan amendments tonight, um, and the two CUPs because they all are within proximity that the abutters have been notified. In such close proximity that they all share abutters, and they've all been notified. So, I think we can proceed with that.
Do we need to state the other two addresses, or?
Yeah, yeah. We would do that.
Have you finished your presentation, your initial presentation?
Yes.
And staff, would you like to address?
Chris, uh, do you want to just talk about the two wetlands crossings and your DES permits and your flows and things like that? That we're going to be looking at the CUP?
Sure.
Yep.
Well, to the extent I can. So, uh, on the 602 Scenic Road parcel, uh, which is Aqua Vista, which is where the Spindle View Town Homes is located, um, we have to file an amendment to our existing DES wetland impact permit. Um, which, that, that permit's already been issued, so this would be an amendment for that. Uh, and that's to install the two 24-inch culverts. The, um, there never was a, to my knowledge, there never was a, a wetlands functions and values report for the Aqua Vista subdivision. So, we're not planning to do anything differently there. Uh, and the waiver that's in request is for this functions and values report that was submitted back in November 3rd, November 2013. And then recently updated, uh, by Tom Sokolowski when we, um, did this permit a couple of months ago, the CUP on 602.
And the staff has indicated...
And we would support that.
You support that.
Yep, yep. DS is going to review it, it's a very small impact, um, so, so we're comfortable with that. So, and we would, we, uh, support the proposal, um, in whole, including the two CUPs and the now four, um, site plan amendments. For the most part, um, these are low-impact, uh, walking trails, um, DS will review the wetlands crossings. Um, the, a buffer impact, uh, the trail's been located such that the buffer impact will be, uh, as minimally impacted as possible. There really is no other alternate location that, that, um, the applicant put, could put this trail because of terrain and because of the layout of the lots in the Vista property, the large residential property at the top, the Skipper's Court property. So, there's no alternate location that this could go. It won't have any impact to any downstream or abutting properties, um, and there's not going to be any degradation or loss of wetland or wetland buffers. It's a very small, isolated wetland property. So, we would support, um, the CUPs, um, for both of those properties. Um, we would also support the site plan amendments, um, for the four properties, and I can help whoever makes the motions, um, with that ownership information. We have no, uh, so we have project completion deadlines, um, as typically laid out, within a month, two months, and a year. There are no planned revisions required. Um, and our other conditions are kind of standard conditions about making sure that other permits are in place and that there's no, um, large wetland impacts or things like that. Um, one of the things that the fire department has asked for is signage at, um, intermittent locations and access points in case there's a men, a, a medical emergency out on the trail. Um, they're basically lightweight finding signage so that, um, the fire department and the, and the folks that have called can give directions on where the incident may have occurred. Um, so the applicant has just asked to, um, work with the fire department on that.
Is that included in here, or does it need to be?
Yep, that's under 3E.
Yep.
Everything else is standard conditions of approval. And again, I can help out with, um... With the motions and make sure we get all of the site plan amendments accounted for.
Just, uh, as part of the discussion, one of the, uh, concerns of this board is with all applicants is to include amenities in, uh, their projects when they do, uh, new subdivisions. And, uh, there's, there's always a discussion back and forth so that the residents, the people who buy these houses have something to do other than just sit in their living room and look out a window. And so, this is completely in, in, in agreement with not only our master plan, but the desires of the, uh, our site plan, uh, review, uh, to consistently add amenities, add amenities. And this is, this is an outstanding way of, of doing it. And so, that's why we're very supportive of trails and walking and things that people can do outside of their residential units. So, let's see, since this is a, a public hearing, right? We go to abutters. Are there any abutters that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none, are there any taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none, then I close the public hearing at, uh, 7:44 PM.
So, if I can jump in, um, the first motion that we're going to make is for a subdivision amendment for Aqua Vista LLC and the associated CUP for Skipper's Court.
Did you want the waiver done first?
Um, yes, why don't, yes, that's a good point, yes, thank you, why don't we do that?
And, uh, as, as the applicant has requested, a waiver from the requirement to perform and submit a functions and values report for the wetland and associated buffer area, is there a motion to grant that waiver? A simple yes would be okay, I think.
Is that acceptable to the staff?
I'm sorry, I missed that, the motion be to grant the waiver, yes, yep.
Yes, yes. Are you making that motion, Jay?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
PL seconded. Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and that waiver is granted. Then, uh, do you want to talk Ham through this, uh, motion?
Yes, so...
Thank you, Ham.
The motion would be for an amendment to, um, and what I can do, and I, I do this often with some of my other boards, is I will state the motion and you say, um, as...
Yes.
Yes, basically. Um, so the motion is to approve, um, the subdivision amendment for PL 2007-006 SU for Aqua Vista LLC. Um, and the CUP for wetlands buffer, buffer encroachment for PL 2015-0106 CUP. And that is for the upper piece, um, at Skipper's Court.
Yes.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Motion made in second, any discussion on this one? All those in favor signify, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by raising their right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And the next motion?
Yep, the second one is going to be for 602 Scenic Road. Now, this is a duplex property, so there's actually no site plan or subdivision, um, amendment required. So, this is simply for the CUP, so it's PLT, uh, 2015-0114 CUP, um, with all the standard conditions in the staff report.
Yes.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Gail?
Second.
Jay?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Yes, sir.
It is, I know you're going to say, are you, it is a subdivision because it's condominium.
However, that particular trail was shown on the subdivision...
Thank you.
...approval. Um, so, in theory, you already approved it, this is just the CUP. So, that's correct, it's just...
Your motion is correct, yep.
We're all set.
Okay, motion?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favors say aye, or raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the third motion is going to be for an amendment to the site plan approval for Aqua Vista LLC. Uh, North Lodges is an Aqua Vista property?
Village.
Aqua...
Village.
Village.
Village. LLC, okay, yes, thank you. Yep, I was on the wrong one. Um, Aqua Village LLC, um, with the, uh, standard conditions of approval?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favors raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ham, for that.
Tell me there's another one.
No, there's one more, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The last one is for a motion for a site plan amendment for Aqua Waterfront LLC. Did I get that motion, okay. Um, which would also include the standard, um, conditions of approval per the, um, uh, staff report.
Aqua Waterf, oh, oh, yes.
Yep, that's the front piece, yep.
Yes, so moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Gail seconds it. Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the, uh, new people, this, this whole project of this whole area is probably the most, uh, comprehensive and, and, I won't say the word complicated, uh, piece. And, and you, as you get into it, you'll, you'll pick it up and it will begin to resonate. Thank you very much, Chris. So, no carts on the trail, huh? Just walking?
The terrain is, it's, um, it's more hiking than walking. Hopefully, we find a happy medium.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, it's just, these are kind of the only places we could get down over and across.
Well, that's good.
It's steep.
Steep, okay.
It'll be a workout.
The next application on our public hearing section of our agenda is, uh, application PL 2015-00011CUP River Buffer. And it includes a waiver for the sidewalks. The staff represent that the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Then, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the application, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The application is accepted, and we can begin the public hearing. And I will open the public hearing. This is working out kind of well for my watch tonight. It's at, um, 7:50 on the nose. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yes, John Rokee on behalf of, uh, Thomas and the Cal Carroll. It's, uh, Mr. C's Taxi Service. This, uh, the, kind of the whole point of doing a site plan was because it, we needed a CUP for the, uh, the Dirkie Brook Buffer, River Buffer, which is 75 feet. And, uh, the property is not even 75 feet away from the Brook. The, like, the Route 107 is not 75 feet away. So, the, the 75-foot buffer line actually is out in the road, and that brings up a point that it'd be a condition of approval because I didn't add that on there. That was something we talked about at TRC. But anyway, the 75-foot line is out on...
Did, uh, did you understand what he said?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
I, as I, as I'm like saying that the line is out on Route 107, that's something we discussed at TRC, and...
That's right.
Forgot to add it. So, anyway, the 75-foot line is, the whole property is in the 75-foot buffer. There's nothing you can do on the property without a CUP.
Which we did make note of in the study. Yep, that's part of the conditions.
What they are using the property for is, uh, the taxi service, and right now, what's happening is the, the, uh, there's 10 taxis that'll be parked on the lawn of the property, the way it exists right now. And, uh, they just pull in off of, directly off of 106, it's basically flat, or 107, it's, it's flat. So, they just pull in, back the taxi out, and go. So, every, every, uh, every space, there's 10 taxis and there's 10 spaces. What there is, what, what happens is the employees drive their car to the site. They'll, they'll pull in, they'll pull a taxi out, pull it forward, and pull their car into the spot, is the way it'll work. So, there's, there, it's all a one-to-one turnover, so we don't need extra employee and, and taxi spaces. Because there'll never be more than, more than 10 cars total on the site at the same time.
Actually, it can't be because of the site, right?
Oh, no, there's, there's no extra, there's no extra space.
If they expand their business and go to 15 taxis, it's not...
Not on, not on, not on the site.
Okay.
So, what, what, the goal of the, the goal of the project was to not have people backing out onto the road. So, we're using the existing entrance. I'm doing just a one-way drive aisle, angled spaces, so they can pull in and pull out, and then drive back out again. And this is in, uh, within the city limits, so it's 107, but it's, uh, maintain, it's the town jurisdiction in, at this point.
Urban compact.
Urban compact, yeah. So, we don't need the state of New Hampshire to grant, you know, multiple access points, the city of Laconia can handle everything.
Because it's a state route.
Yeah, it's a state route, but if it's urban compact, then the city, the city takes jurisdiction in that area.
Oh, that's what that means.
Um, the, we are really close to Dirkie Brook. I mean, to get everything to fit on this, we're really close, close to Dirkie Brook. So, we have done a pervious pavement parking lot. I, my initial, like, my initial design just had pervious pavement for the parking spaces, and all the drainage calculations worked. But in going to the Conservation Commission and the TRCs, everyone was more comfortable if I made it the whole thing pervious pavement. So, it's, it's actually overdesigned for the storm events that'll be landing on here because we're, because we're so close to Dirkie Brook. And actually have it a little bit higher, so anything that, if, if, even if it tried to drain, it would drain towards, uh, towards, uh, South Main Street. And there are catch basins along South Main Street already, so no matter what, uh, we're covered drainage-wise. Um, I have a guardrail, guardrail going along the edge of the parking lot, just so nobody accidentally drives over the edge. I put in a bunch of, like, a bunch of plantings along the top edge, and we're, and there's actually, uh, what is it? It's Japanese knotweed there, uh, that's growing, so we're going to be pulling out some invasive species. And I talked to Scott McPhee yesterday about a couple of different things we could put on the embankment to, uh, stabilize this little back out again in the area, so we're pulling stuff up. And there was a, uh, some of the things I had, I had suggested on the plant types, Scott and I are going to work out the final details. I think some, I think some of the ones that I had picked were kind of older on the list for, uh, shoreline plantings. So, uh, that was one of the things I, we can add as a condition of approval or whatever, it's just, it's just plant types, basically.
Have there been any specs presented or approved for that, um, guardrail along there? What it's going to look like?
No. Would you like to see it? We could certainly add it.
I would like for the staff to have, uh, approval authority over that. Because it can, it can go from, uh, something extremely ugly to something that's functional but attractive.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the only, the only purpose of this guardrail is to just, you know, make sure everybody knows kind of where to stop. I mean, it could even, this could even be like a split rail guard, you know, like a wooden guardrail situation.
Well, it's fine with me so long as we have in there the authority that the staff reviews it before you put it in, so that we don't end up with something that's, uh...
Yeah, just like a standard W-beam guardrail, yeah.
Yeah, because across the street are, are residential, uh, houses.
No, this, this is definitely something that, uh, that really the only, I, I don't know that necessarily needs to be crash-rated or anything. I mean, it could be, it could be like a wooden, a wooden guardrail.
No, no, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's fine with me. You do need something, though, because...
Yeah, I mean, you need something to stop.
The distance down to Dirkie Brook, you could easily end up in there.
Yeah. And there's a ways, too. But anyway, we added, uh, we added the street, we added street trees. There's a couple of trees out there, but they're kind of in where the parking is going to go, so they're going to get wiped out. So, I added three street trees. I have some, uh, some arborvitae's and a fence along this side because it's a residential, it is residential here. A lot of the, a lot of places along here are businesses now on this side of the street because this is the, uh, it is commercial zone, I believe.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, this side of the street is all commercial zoned.
Yep, correct.
We went to the Conservation Commission, went over everything. Like, like I said, from the Conservation Commission, we added the rest of it as pervious pavement, so it's overdesigned. The, uh, city of, uh, Luke Powell wanted the first 10, 10 feet, like, basically the driveways in, to be regular pavement. Because when they sand and salt and do everything, they didn't want to throw all that onto, onto the, uh, onto anything pervious and then have, you know, be causing issues, so...
Just, just a, a kind of a tech, design question. When you use this, uh, this pervious pavement, um, you, you will, in certain very rare storms, you will get water sheeting off of it. The pavement cannot, can only absorb so much in, in a certain period of time, correct?
Yeah, the, what you do is the, you have actually like 18 inches of, like, pretty big voids underneath the, like, the, the material they put underneath. So, it goes, it goes pretty much directly through the pavement, no matter what, and down into the voids. And what you do is you, you have enough volume, you're basically making a detention pond underneath your surface. And the idea is you, you collect the storm event, like, the 50-year storm event gets held underneath and then percolates out underneath.
My point is, is if you get a lot of rain...
Yep.
It will sheet off of the asphalt.
It's a very large amount.
It's, in this case, because it's oversized, it's going to be like almost a 100-year event before it's going to sheet off.
But I, what I also noticed is...
And there's catch basins right there, too.
Right, but you also have a, you have a asphalt curb there to kind of keep it from sheeting off.
No, the, the curb, again, the curb is on the higher side, uh, the higher side, just to kind of, again, define where, like, I don't want any cars to go over the embankment. So, the curbing is mostly...
That's all that's for.
Yep.
Not, not necessarily retaining the sheet.
No, that's, that's the higher, that's the higher side. It, it's actually sheeting away from the curb.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. No, there's, there's, there's no curbing on the inside edge. Like, if any, if anything, you know, if they need, if it's right before they need to maintain it and something does sheet off, it, there's nothing stopping it from going right into the catch basin system, so... And with the pervious asphalt, that is something they have to do probably like twice a year, like, in the spring and in the fall, is do a street sweeper to keep all the voids clean. They said the fence, they said the, all the, uh, stuff along the road. That's pretty much, that's pretty much it of everything I've talked to, the, all the different departments.
Do you want to hear about the sidewalk waiver very quickly?
Oh, yes. Uh, sidewalk waiver, uh, there, there is, like, it, it narrows down to a triangle over here, and then the, uh, the connection to 106 is over here. There's no sidewalk in this area, and most of the houses, like, along this side of the street anyway, and, uh, are really, really close up to the road. I don't know that there's any big development potential in this... Uh, I don't know that there's any big development potential in this area that would, you know, that you could connect anything up, so a sidewalk on, like, on this parcel would probably never connect to anything. So, we're asking for the waiver for it. And, uh, if we, like, if you actually extend... Yeah, this is the, this is the edge of road, right there. So, the only way you could do it is actually a fully attached sidewalk, and there'd be basically no green space in the end if you, if a sidewalk isn't installed on this property. Um, I think, I think that, that's kind of the justification. I'd, I'd gone through all the different criteria. I don't, I don't have a copy over here to read it as a record, but...
Try and we can hit it. Yep, in our staff report.
Yep.
Okay, the staff report?
Ideally, it's a waiver without in lieu fee, but that's what we, we request, anyway.
Well, if it meets our criteria, then that would...
Yep, that's, that's, that was my goal. I, I tried to go through it. I worked with Shannon Brandy on that, trying to make sure it met every criteria, so...
So, we're pretty excited to see, um, this is the perfect use of perv, of pervious pavement. Um, we've got a, a site here where it's very minimal use. It's really just, um, the movement of, of a personal car with a work car. Um, there's not a lot of traffic flow over it, so there's not gonna be a lot of need for sanding and salting because of skidding or anything like that. And it's very close to a wetland resource area. Uh, so this is the perfect use for pervious pavement. We're so excited that they're gonna use it. Um, let me go through, so we worked with John quite closely on the CUP criteria. He's been to the Conservation Commission. Um, he's done everything possible to pull the pavement away from the buffer as much as possible, um, or away from the stream. The whole site is in the buffer. Um, and he worked with the Conservation Commission on getting a pretty robust replanting plan for that shoreline, uh, riverland area there. Right now, it's full of invasives. They're gonna pull that up, um, get rid of those invasive materials, and put a very thick, robust buffer to protect that water resource from any of the development, any of the, um, the noise or the pollution or anything from that area. Um, there is some, right now, the site is being used, um, as a taxi company. They're actually in violation. Um, and there has been some concern about the use of so many vehicles on that lot. So, we did have DPW go out and take a look at site distance. Um, and as you can see, we have assured that there will not be any vehicles backing out into the main street. They have a, an aisle width there so that they can back out and maneuver on the site and not have to impede traffic.
Where currently, they are doing that.
Exactly.
And so, this is a significant safety improvement?
Oh, it fixes it in a huge way, yes.
Yep. In addition, we're asking that, um, an exit sign, uh, I mean, a stop sign be put at the exit, um, to make sure that those taxi drivers are cautious and don't just wing themselves out into the street. It's a very low-traffic street, um, so they will be reminded to stop and make sure to look both ways. Um, one of the, one of the things that we, um, have asked, and is a condition of approval, is that this is being approved as pervious pavement. It can only remain as pervious pavement. So, as maintenance occurs in the future, 10 years down the line or so, the pervious pavement cannot be paved over with standard pavement. It has to always remain pervious pavement. Otherwise, the applicant has to come back to us, and we'll be talking about stormwater management and resource protection at that point in time. Um, we are using a little bit of conventional pavement. I know John talked about just at the entrance and exit aprons.
Yeah, just, just the aprons in, yep.
DPDW is afraid that, um, sand and salt trucks paving the road would clog up the pervious pavement. So, that's a perfect application of the non-pervious pavement.
Can I ask you a question? Is it all right?
Yep, absolutely.
You're talking about this sand and salt screwing up that pavement.
Yep.
So, you don't use sand or salt on that pavement, ever, in the wintertime?
You don't actually have to, uh, it's...
You don't have to.
The, the theory, the theory of it, and it's been...
Yep.
...borne out in a lot of practices, is that because it's, it's, there's voids to, basically, to underground, that the natural heat of the ground keeps it ice-free during the winter.
The black pavement heats up enough that any, so it's plowed. Any snow that might be remaining that sheen, when the sun comes up, rather than pooling and running and then re-icing at night, it just drops right in, and there's no need for the salt and sand.
Because of the location to the Brook, um, I guess they'll be real sensitive while putting salt on there.
Right.
Sand is no problem, but it's the salt.
No, oh, sand is a problem. For pervious, that's the greatest problem for pervious.
Yep.
Because it fills, blocks it.
Yep, that's exactly right.
But, so, but you wouldn't be using salt, then?
Very little.
Very little.
Very little.
It's...
Yeah. So, this has been used, um, in several locations around the area. Uh, one of the flagship, if I can put it that way, is the cruise ship comp business up in Meredith or Center Harbor?
Center Harbor.
Center Harbor.
Yep.
Kukon, yeah. Oh, Moulton, I'm sorry. Um, and they, that's been in place for several seasons. Um, in addition, UNH has several of their parking lots that are used in the...
And you got another one starting in Laconia now, too, that Steve Smith just got approved, right?
That's right. Yeah, Smith-Tubular, yep. And the Gopher Community Church.
Yeah, the Gopher Community Church has had pervious for about five years.
I'm just curious about the salt.
Yeah, and I, I haven't done a lot of them, and I, I actually called, and I've, I've been talking to Pike Industries, and, uh, it looks like probably GMI might be doing the work, and Pike Industries supplying the pervious mix, so...
At the hospital, we approved the, uh, plan for the expansion of the ER, and it includes a section of pervious pavement also.
Yep. Well, this'll be, this'll be good if it, you know, but hopefully, everything works exactly the way we want it to, and you'll be...
Well, you're engineering it, right?
You're gonna be able to, you're gonna be able to see it in practice all the time. It's, it's a good, it's a good spot.
So, I apologize. I'm gonna have some revisions to this. Um, we've worked with the applicant, like I said, um, on a fairly quick basis because this was a violation site. So, we do have some changes to the staff report. Um, so, you can see, we've got project, project completion deadlines. Under planned revisions, we've got A, C, and D. Um, we're gonna skip B for the sake of simplicity, and we're gonna add, um, E is that the guardrail spec be added to the plan, which is what Warren just brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that specification for the construction of the pervious pavement, John, also be added, because I didn't see that in the plan set.
Oh, yeah.
That's number F. G would be that all landscaping plantings be approved by planning and concom, because that conversation has just started with the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I just talked to Scott about it yesterday afternoon, so, yep.
H would be that the invasive species be removed. Again, another conservation. I would be that...
Now, is that from the whole site or just from the, uh, area where the pervent, pervious pavement's going down?
The area that's being disturbed, yeah. I would be that, um, uh, the maintenance regulations, the maintenance spec sheet for the pervious pavement be posted in the main office of the building so that it's accessible for anyone at any time doing maintenance out there.
Okay.
Um, and then J was what you had just mentioned, that the wetlands buffer needs to be added to the plan.
Yeah.
Um, the only other thing I want to say, um, you can see the rest of the standard conditions of approval. There was a typo under 4C. A digging permit will need to be obtained from DPW for work within, um, we put Messer Street instead of Main Street. It's the Main Street right-of-way prior to the start of work. And all other standard conditions of approval.
Okay, then we'll call for a butters. Are there any butters that would like to address the board on this application? Are there any taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at 8:08. Is there any discussion that we would like to have before we move to the motion stage? Seeing none, the first thing that we will need to address, then, is the waiver request for the sidewalk. Did you want to give a few, uh...
Yep, yep. I apologize, I didn't speak to that. So, we would support that waiver request for sidewalk. Um, this is a little bit tougher, but I do feel that, um, the waiver request is the right decision. Um, there is sidewalk way up by Main Street where the condo complex is. However, if you take a look at that sidewalk, it's actually on the private property. Um, the road right-of-way is narrow here. There are utility poles adjacent. Um, in that case, the buildings are actually a little bit farther away from the road. But you can see, as you move down the street, the residential structures on that side of the road, because the sidewalk is across the street, are very close to the road. If we were to follow the same path of sidewalk uphill, up, um, in property from the utility poles, we would be cutting off these residential units, um, front yards, the majority of their front yards. It is not a highly, uh, residential area, um, trafficked area as far as pedestrians. Um, there are not very many locations for folks to go, um, from here. On this site in particular, if they were to put sidewalks on this property, you can see, uh, that, that, you know, the house is within probably five feet of the right-of-way. Um, you would not be able to put a sidewalk between the house and the road right-of-way on this property. So, I think constraints of the infrastructure in this area really would make it very difficult to put sidewalks in. Um, to that end, we're looking at waiver conditions, um, number six. Whether or not the subject property is proposed and upon completion will be in substantial plans with provisions of the master plan and the zoning ordinance if the waiver is granted. Um, so, if, if we, if we do not grant this waiver, um, it would be very difficult for these folks to meet zoning, the sidewalks to meet zoning for, um, we would be taking up a portion of their yards. Um, this site in particular would have to go to the ZBA because of, uh, the pavement issues and proximity, uh, to the public way and things like that. Um, so, that's criteria number six. Number seven, whether or not reasonable alternatives to sidewalk construction exist and consistent with purposes and benefits of the sidewalk requirement. Again, because of the narrowness of this area, the close proximity of the houses to the street, um, there really isn't a way, even if we were to take in lieu funds, to be able to put a sidewalk across the street, um, or in the proximate location of, of these properties. And then, the planning department is determined after consideration that granting the waiver is advisable. We definitely do with the commercial properties proximity to Dirkie Brook and the availability of those properties to build out, um, and again, the proximity of those residential properties. It just makes sense to waive it in this particular area. So, that would be criteria six, seven, and eight.
So, whoever makes the motion to grant the waiver only needs to state six, seven, and eight.
Yep, yeah, actually, six, seven, eight, and nine, yep.
Thank you.
Good question? No? Okay.
Then I would like to entertain a motion to grant the waiver request citing these three.
Uh, okay, I move for, let's see, uh, application PL 2015-0111 CUP Wetland Buffer and PL 2015-0095, uh, that the board grant the, uh, the sidewalk waiver request, uh, as, as supported under our Site Plan Review Regulations under 7.13 sidewalks, uh, according to, uh, evidence, letter E, um, number six, seven, eight, and nine.
Excellent. Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Yes.
I'd like to say something. I, again, on this sidewalk thing, I'm just gonna bring it up because it's a, it's something I hear from people all over the city, especially up in the Weers area. Is this a sidewalk if it had been built? Is this something you perceive that the city would plow?
I think if, if the site was not constrained as such, um, and we were able to get sidewalk up here, I think probably what my recommendation would be to have in lieu funds, that we would then connect to the Main Street sidewalk. And yes, I do think that that would be plowed. I don't think the land up here allows sidewalk to be built.
I got that.
So, I...
I'm just, again, I'm just trying to make a point with this, and I hate to take time.
Right, no, that's fine, I don't mind at all.
I'd just like to know if, uh, if it was built, if this would be something the city would, would plow.
I would hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Then the motions were made in second. Uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor are granting the waiver? Any opposed? A waiver is granted unanimously. Just on that point, Charlie, we are faced many times, and they'll, they'll be coming up, that we will want a, quote, "sidewalk to nowhere" because of the potential for other development and connectivity.
I have no problem with that, Warren, as long as it's, it's gonna be plowed.
Well, I'm in...
If somebody's gonna make the investment, and the city feels it's rather, it's a sidewalk for safety reasons, I get that.
Yeah.
But I don't understand that in the property, you know, that pay for this, the developers don't get why it's not being plowed. Is it so important that we want to have it there, but not so important it's being, that it's being plowed for people to use it?
Yes, that's a very good point.
So, if you're saying it's gonna be coming up, then I'll be bringing that up again if I'm sitting here, so...
Oh, good.
But that would all be subject, that is, city council's purview, that's not ours.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to bring up that point. I mean, I think Charlie has a point. We often approve sidewalks, even long stretches of sidewalks, that, that don't have winter maintenance plans. Um, and, and really, it's, it's just a matter of the fact that they never were plowed. They weren't scheduled in 2012 or 2013, so even though they exist as sidewalks now, they're not scheduled to be plowed. If we bring it up, if we bring up that point, then perhaps it'll be added to that schedule.
Excellent. Okay, then, let's now move on to the application itself. Um, with all those additions, Shannon, did you, did you want to, uh, help?
Make that motion?
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that. So, the motion would be an approval of application PL 2015-0111 CUP Wetland Buffer for the criteria cited in the site plan, um, 1 through 5, as well as PL 2015, S, uh, 0095 for the site plan approval. Um, and that would be with, um, conditions 1, A through D, 2, A through...
J.
J, thank you, um, without a B, as previously stated. Um, 3, A through G, 4, A through C, and 5, A through F, and 6, as built.
With that minor, uh, typo change on 4C from message to main.
Yep.
Excellent.
Someone wants to so-move me? Yes.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
You're doing well tonight, Jay. Thank you.
I'm only following hand.
Great. Uh, motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And this is a, please thank the applicant. This is a significant improvement.
Right here.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, this is a tremendous improvement to that area, not only for safety, but the aesthetics that it will do along there, and the way you're going to be doing it as proposed with the residential houses across the street, that will be, that's excellent. We thank you very much. We know that this process has been a little difficult for you, but it's because of that Derky Brook and the buffer that we're very, very protective of wetlands and buffer areas. So, thank you for your perseverance, and thank you for coming forward to make this investment.
Thanks very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
No more, John?
No more. Not too late anyway.
We'll see you again, though, John, right?
Actually, probably next month. I could probably turn in the Lilac thing tomorrow for the unit, just the Cape unit.
Oh, okay, yep.
So, yeah, probably next month.
Okay, great.
This is just into the board members, when you, when you clear your files and things. I'd hold on to this site plan regulation for sidewalks. It's, it's a, it's, it keeps coming up, and it'd be very good to have it handy. We did that one, we did that one, so we close the public hearing. I'm all legal so far, right?
You are. So, we have no application acceptances. I have no new business or old business, so I can move on to my planning department report if you would like me to.
That's very nice of you, yes, please.
It's very quickly, it's very quick. Just want to say, the Main Street Bridge is done, it's completed, the Gateway Park is completed. Many thanks to all the city staff that saw this through, it looks fantastic, so many compliments on that. So, hopefully, many of you made it to the ribbon cutting, I think it was last Friday or the Friday before. We are almost complete with our Water Street Extension Drainage Improvement, that will be done by Pumpkin Fest, and that is between, kind of at the, at the turn of Pleasant Street there. If you follow Water Street out to the stop sign and then kept going in between where Port Rockers is and where the old Video Choice, I believe, building was there, the Rent a Center building. That is being upgraded, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it was a very large expanse of cement that was always pooled water or a large ice area, very bad drainage, and so that is being upgraded into an infiltration basin, and folks in the downtown who were asked for their opinion and input on the design, said they really wanted some performance space, some seating area, and a water feature as well, so that's all incorporated into the plan as well.
Is that part of the TIF?
Fabulous. It is not part of the TIF.
How do they get paid for it?
It is a, a, kind of a conglomeration of drainage money. There was a water line upgrade there, we had some planning money to pay for the design, and some additional funds that the city manager has to make sure that-
So, some of it came from the water department, you just pull it in from everywhere?
That's exactly right, yep, yep. So, and that brings me to Pumpkin Fest, which will be October 24th. I have for you a plan here that I'd like to pass out showing the layout. This is my most up-to-date plan. We have our final meeting, planning meeting tomorrow. This may change, but I wanted to give you a heads up as to the layout. There will be some road closures here in downtown, that is signified by the blue line. Let me show you guys get your package. That blue line is the Costume and Pumpkin Parade, and so those streets will be closed. The little orange boxes in the City Hall parking lot and in the central parking lot, which is where the Thursday Farmer's Market is, those little orange boxes are vendors, so there's going to be food vendors and retail vendors in those spaces. And you can see they've got a, what they're calling Pumpkin Alley on Canal Street, they have a carving station and bowling in the church parking lot, pumpkin bowling. They're going to be decorating Rotary Park as a pumpkin park, that's where a majority of the schools' pumpkins are. There are 5,000 pumpkins coming in from area schools that children carved that will be placed in Pumpkin Park to be displayed. The pop, the bottom picture is a picture of, it is from Keene, but that is the tower, the infamous, or I shouldn't say infamous, the famous tower that is like six stories high. That will be going in front of the train station, you can see the big pumpkin here that says Tower. And then, there will be four-foot, what basically looked like bookcases up and down Main Street, also showcasing pumpkins. This event in the past has been, has had the Guinness Book of World Records for most lit jack-o'-lanterns at one time. I believe it has been, there's now competition between other events, I believe that we have, this, this event has now lost that distinction. They aren't necessarily going to go for that this year, because this is their first year in Laconia, but it certainly is an option in the future. We have the potential for nearly 30,000 to 40,000 folks coming to this event based on Keene's projections and the fact that this is a more centrally located location. So, if you want any more information, please check out their website. If you just Google "Laconia Pumpkin Festival," they'll have information about parking areas and a shuttle system, and their welcome centers, and all kinds of information about ongoing, additional ongoing events. For example, there are train rides, the Hobo Railroad is offering for foliage, I believe the Mount Washington is going to be doing one last run that weekend. There is a pumpkin-chunkin' contest down at the Speedway, which I don't know if you've ever heard of or seen that. It is a contest to throw pumpkins by various means as far as you possibly can. It's absolutely fabulous. So, if you have any questions, certainly let me know, but I wanted to showcase that because this is going to be an absolutely fabulous event here in Laconia.
Just on that point, Charlie, since Claire should be complimented as one of the sparks that-
Yes, absolutely.
Warren was going down there to cause trouble.
Well, 30,000 people shutting down your store, you certainly did cause problems for yourself.
Actually, actually, there's an awful lot of Ruth Sterling to, you know, for, to cover her back, she's taking a lot of abuse, she lives in Keene. So, there's been a lot of personal attacks on her down there, just a lot of, a lot of bad blood down there in Keene from people that aren't happy, they'd rather see nothing happening at all than have it moved somewhere else.
Yeah.
So, it's like, if you can't do it here, nobody's going to have it. And, but they're the ones that did it, they chose that. I actually went down there to help them down there, but when it didn't work out that way, it was like a great opportunity for us here in Laconia.
No, congratulations, that was-
Of all of us, because obviously, there's been a ton of work since then from a lot of people, including the Chamber and obviously, department heads and staff, but this is going to be a lot. And even in Laconia, I had a business person today, Mona Groan, to me, that they feel they've been left out. And this is a person on Union Avenue, and I said, "Well, how could you be left out?" I mean, it's in the newspapers, you know who to contact, well, we should have had something in writing. It's just, again, it's very bizarre.
Yeah, so, I mean, just, you know, if, if anyone, because again, you know, we're being televised, we're on television, so if anyone listening wants to be involved, the Chamber or the folks to contact.
Well, yeah, and I, and I understand, I mean, some people need, I guess, they used to stop being in writing and stuff like that, so, again, we'll, you know, we just, we have to-
Yep.
-reach out and help people understand, because this is really a citywide event.
Absolutely.
The pumpkin viewing may be in downtown Laconia, but with the parking lots all over the city and out of the city, and this is a chance for all these business people to put pumpkins out and say, "Hey, come on in." I mean, it's no different than Motorcycle Week when they put out motorcycle-related stuff to make people real, even banners, to say, "Hey, you know, we're open and we're, we want to have all you visitors come here," so.
Just kind of on that same topic, there was an article written by a, a real estate broker from Roche about how Laconia has, is beginning to be transformed. I don't know if you saw it, I was-
Imagine that.
Imagine that.
Reimagine that.
It really was, she did a very nice job. She did a very nice job kind of outlining why it's happening and what's happening.
Excellent.
Sidewalks, right?
Yeah, sidewalks.
They helped.
So, the last thing I just want to mention, we've actually seen a lot of development proposals tonight that I would have mentioned. The one we didn't see is the Chinburg project, they are finishing up in their rental space. I had a meeting with Eric Chinburg yesterday, he, of the 36 or so units, he has already rental agreements on 12 of them, and is hoping to have people move in for December 1st.
Where is this, I'm sorry?
This is the Ellen Rogers Project, the Beacon West Mill redevelopment, and we are actually in discussions with him about what to do with what they call Building One, which is the building on the river. There is a possibility that that building may not be built, it may be a green space area instead, so we're in negotiations, discussions more with, with Eric Chinburg right now on that. So, I can update you further on that in November.
That may affect the Riverwalk Site Plan also, because there was a lot of discussion how to go around that building or in front or wherever.
Yep, yep, effect, I think, would be, it's going to impact it, not necessarily in a bad way, I think, and that's kind of what we're talking about now, so.
Oh, excellent.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Shannon, on any subject that you'd want discussed?
No movement on the tree by the, out by Duncanville?
No, there's no application on that tree.
Okay.
Well, if I may interject, since you've brought that up, I would hope that, and I plan to mention this to the city manager and/or the mayor, that since they had some tree expert, "Look at that tree," and it was in the paper, who mentioned that the sidewalk there, that the pavement there is probably injuring the tree, that maybe, because that sidewalk goes nowhere, maybe they should be removing that asphalt that's right up against the tree roots and replace it with something else, rather, even if it's just, they can keep the curb there, because the curb designates that as a sidewalk, but maybe that could just be dirt there or something else.
Pervious.
Yeah, well, something that will let water get to the tree, because if you've had, have a tree expert, and, you know, I guess you guys said at the earlier plan that that tree was supposed to be left there, so maybe somebody needs to say something about that asphalt that's right there.
Yeah, good. Lakes Region Planning Commission, the, there's two things. One, this summer's hazardous, Lakes Region Household Hazardous Waste Collection process, we had record turnouts in 2015, and our volume and collected and removed from the possible environmental impact was the second highest of the past decade. It was tremendously successful. And Gail, you normally, were you out there this year?
Yes.
You normally are a volunteer as, as part of that process. And that was, the Laconia site was quite a busy one.
Very busy. It's nice because there's alternate weekends, so if you miss one, like if you missed Guilfords, you can go to Laconia, usually Laconia's the second one. And they'll accept from the surrounding towns, not just the town that it's in.
And that, that was put together by the-
Lakes Region Planning Commission, yeah. They've been the lead on that, and the different communities in Laconia participates and pays in towards the cost of that, all the communities do. It's, it's very, very good. The second thing from the planning commission, we just held our commissioners' meeting, and Hamilton was there with me representing Laconia, and there was a presentation by the Department of Environmental Services, New Hampshire DES, on their new app, and it, it is called "The Well Informed," and it's, it's for really private well owners. And Laconia is serviced by a public water system for a good percentage of the city, but there are many that are on private wells. And what this, it's a, it's a free app, and it's under New Hampshire DES, and you go up onto it, and you then take your report from when you've had your water tested, and it's a lengthy thing, and it tells you this, 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 and this, and when you look at it, it's like trying to understand your, your tax return, it's very, very difficult. And you try to figure, well, is this good, is it bad, what should I do? And what this site does is you plug in those values from your, your test, and it gives you recommendations as to, because you're high in this, therefore, you can do this X, Y, and Z, or you're, you're low in this, you need to do this, and it's-
It helps you interpret, basically, your water testing results, it helps you interpret that scientific report.
Tells you what, what health issues are associated with high levels of different contaminants.
Absolutely fabulous tool.
Yeah, and, and it is tremendous, because throughout the state, there's a tremendous number of private wells, and this is the first time, I'm on a private well, and I've had mine tested, and you look at that report, and it's like, oh my God, what does this thing say? This is their first in, into that, and it should be very good. And they give context that, after you put that in there, that if you want to talk to the expert down at State, the DES, just give them a call, and they'll talk you through it all, so. It was excellent. So, those are the two big things from the planning commission. Is there anything to report from the Conservation Commission?
Of course, there is.
Oh, okay.
Conservation Commission is always very busy. They completed a successful United Way Day of Caring River Cleanup Project using volunteer divers from the recently formed Mill Foil Subcommittee. I believe they did that in Black Brook, and the invasive land species were also removed from the, from the Opichi Boat Launch Area. They continue the Winnebago River Cleanup Downstream, coordinating with the October 12 Special River Drawdown. They are looking forward to the Black Book Geomorphic, Geomorphic Report, that's going to come in October, which is the one that they've been working on all along. They've been also working with the Lake Winnebago Watershed Association, following up on the Black Brook Invasive Mill Foil Diver Removal Project in addition to the one they did with the United Way Day of Caring. And they are working right now to make sure that all of our construction sites are well stabilized before snowfall, so that in the spring, when we get those heavy rains and there's no vegetation to hold that dirt in place, that those sites are well stabilized. So, that's keeping him busy, very busy right now.
The Conservation Commission is appointed by the city council, as, as we are, and they have many functions that they operate independently. One of them is to work with the planning department and the, and the TRC on, on site plan applications and things that can be for us, and in your package, you'll always see the, the comments and suggestions and recommendations of the Conservation Commission. To us, in that format, they are recommendations, and, and we review them and take them very seriously. They're a great group of people that work very, very hard, and they're very, very competent. David, our city councillor liaison, was unable to be with us tonight, he had a medical issue, so there, is there anything that I can't, thank you very much.
I don't think so.
Probably now the whole focus on the city is on Charlie's Pumpkin Festival.
Remember, not Charlie, it's cities.
Well.
And I, you know, again, when I say, I don't say that lightly about city staff and department heads, the mayor's been a huge pusher of this, back of this, so it's a really big citywide event, everybody working on it.
No, that's very nice that you do that, because just about anything that we do takes the involvement of so many departments and so many people.
Sometimes you have to drag them in the kitchen and scream them, but this one has been good.
Fantastic. Any other business to come before? I know. Minutes, the minutes of our meeting of September the 1st were distributed, and are there, if there are no, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? You do not have to have been at that meeting to vote on the minutes of the meeting, we have a quorum tonight, and those present can vote. So, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the planning, regular planning board meeting of September 1st?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Charlie seconds, thank you. Or were you scratching?
No, no, I was just, it, it, she-
Perfect.
If he didn't do it, she did it, so.
Yeah, motions were made and second, and any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Any opposition? The minutes are accepted unanimously by this planning board this evening. Thank you. And again, part of the routine as, as you get involved is that sometimes you think, well, why are they spending so much time reading things into the records or being so precise on wordings? It is the official legal document, and that if an applicant does not agree with the decision of this board, their recourse is not to the city council, it's not to any political agency, it is directly to Superior Court. And Superior Court, they don't hold a court where we go up and testify, and then the judge reviews the records, and they, what they want to see is, did we follow the law? Were we consistent? Is there reason for our decisions? And because we have been so concerned about making things accurate, since I've been on the board, we've never been overturned, and it's because of the history of the board and the way that we do things, and so that's why we do spend time. Then, anything else other than, I would like to have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Charlie seconds, thank you, Charlie. Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.